Welcome to the Town of Lexington Council Meeting. This meeting is being held at Town Hall Monday evening, March 5th, 2018. This meeting is being broadcast live and will be replayed several times on the Town's Information Channel 2 over the next week. I'm Steve McDougall, the Mayor of Lexington. At this time, I would like to introduce you, my fellow council members. To my left is Councilmember Todd Corns.
Good evening.
To his left is Councilmember Steve Baker.
Good evening.
To my right is Councilmember Kathy Manis.
Good evening.
And to her right is Councilmember Ron Williams.
Good evening.
At this time, I would like to welcome Pastor Tim Brokop. If he would please come forward from Midlands Christian Church to please offer invocation for tonight's meeting.
Let us pray.
Yes, sir.
O loving God, who does not change like shifting shadows, we give you thanks and praise for every good and perfect gift. We recognize that each day is a gift from your hand. It's your breath in our lungs, so we pour out our praise to you only. We express our gratitude for the privilege of living in a country which has a government of the people, by the people, and for the people. We lift up our fellow citizens, the members of this council, and we ask you to grant them the wisdom they need to address the challenges which our community faces. We also pray for the other public servants represented here this evening. We are mindful of the sacrifices each makes on behalf of our community. Lastly, we pray for the conduct of this meeting. May each word spoken and each attitude displayed be enveloped by a spirit of civility. May each person here this evening seek not only his or her own good, but the common good. These prayers and petitions we make in the name that is above every name. Amen.
Amen. Pastor, thank you very much for being with us. We appreciate you coming tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, it's nice to see you. At this time, are there any former or current military personnel with us tonight?
Go ahead, Todd. Go ahead, Todd. Yeah, we do. We've got Todd Lyle right there.
Todd, come on, step forward and offer a... I want you to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight, if you don't mind. Come to the microphone. If everyone will, please stand.
Pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Todd, thank you very much. Thank you for your service. At this time, I will call the meeting to order and like to report on our executive session this evening. We had one, excuse me, two legal issues. One was discussion of pending litigation, and one issue was legal advice regarding a town ordinance. We had four contractual issues: one economic development matter, one issue related regarding utilities contract, one issue regarding SE DOT contract, and one issue regarding purchase of real estate. We also had one personnel item. It was a routine personnel review. This time, there was no vote taken. Do I have a motion to ratify the mayor's executive session report?
So may.
Mr. Baker makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams, second. Some motion. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Deletions on tonight's agenda. Are there any deletions for the agenda for this evening? Hearing none, we will move right into presentations. Our first presentation tonight will be a proclamation read by Councilmember Kathy Manis, a proclamation for Dr. Lucas C. Clamp. Dr. Clamp, if you would, please come forward and join us at the microphone. Councilmember Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am honored to make this proclamation tonight for Dr. Clamp. I have known Dr. Clamp for many years when he began as the Assistant Principal at Lexington High School when my older children were there. And he has his mother with him tonight, who was the superintendent in Barnwell, Williston, District 29. So he's in a family of educators, and as a parent of a ninth grader at River Bluff, I am very honored to do this, and I appreciate everything you do for our community, Dr. Clamp. So it's a proclamation of the mayor and council for the town of Lexington congratulating Dr. Luke Clamp as the 2018 South Carolina Secondary Principal of the Year. Whereas Dr. Luke Clamp received his bachelor's degree in science from Clemson University, his master's degree, educational specialist degree in educational administration, and doctorate in curriculum instruction from the University of South Carolina; and whereas Dr. Clamp began his career as a chemistry and environmental science teacher and assistant football and baseball coach at Ermo High School in 2002; and whereas in 2004, Dr. Clamp developed curriculum for incoming freshmen, a peer mentoring program, a peer tutoring center, and a school-wide staff development as a dean of study, smaller learning communities at Ermo High School; and whereas Dr. Clamp joined Lexington County School District 1 in 2006 as an assistant principal at Lexington High School; and whereas in 2011, Dr. Clamp began the founding leadership as principal of River Bluff High School and developed innovative high school learning within a flexible modular instructional schedule and partnering with EL education for the learning design. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and council for the town of Lexington that Dr. Luke Clamp is hereby recognized and congratulated for being named the 2018 South Carolina Secondary Principal of the Year.
Thank you so very much for what you do for our community, and please, microphone is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to thank my mother, who's here tonight. She is not only a mentor and a great parent, but also an inspiration to me as an educator. It's a humbling experience to work and lead here and serve in Lexington. It's a place our family and I wanted to call home, and we certainly have enjoyed that over the last over fifteen years now. So serving the students and the teachers here at River Bluff is a pleasure and an honor, and we just believe in the partnership that the town provides for us and look forward to many, many years. We believe the best is yet to come. So again, thank you so much for this honor.
Very good. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Our next presentation tonight is from Councilmember Ron Williams. It's a proclamation celebrating the sixtieth anniversary of the Lexington Women's Club. So ladies, if you would, please come join us at the microphone as Councilmember Williams reads your proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas the Lexington Women's Club was established on April 7th, 1958 with the motto of "Work today for a better tomorrow," and for sixty years, they have continued to enhance the quality of life for the citizens of Lexington County. And whereas, since 1984, the annual golf tournament has raised and donated $115,336 to local organizations that serve the community; and whereas, the Lexington Women's Club has provided thousands of dollars in scholarships to local high school students, recognized teachers during American Education Week, and assisted with the preparation of nature trails for several Lexington District 1 schools; and whereas, the Lexington Women's Club promotes and encourages public service and patriotism in Lexington throughout support of veterans organizations, recognition of local historic sites, honoring law enforcement officers, volunteering in our schools, and providing funds and donations to several shelters in the Lexington area, touching almost every aspect of the Lexington community in its sixty years. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and council of the town of Lexington, South Carolina, that the Lexington Women's Club is hereby congratulated and commended on the occasion of their sixtieth anniversary for their outstanding service to our citizens and our community. Proclaimed this fifth day of March 2018, Steve McDougall, Mayor.
Congratulations. Thank you. Y'all, please join us at the microphone, and anybody that wants to say a few words are certainly welcome to.
On behalf of Lexington Women's Club, I want to thank y'all for recognizing the hard work of the dedicated and wonderful ladies that have made up Lexington Women's Club for the past sixty years. And we have a rich history of working with the town of Lexington and the surrounding areas in projects that have enhanced the environment and the lives of others, and we look forward to doing that in the future.
Very good. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Our next presentation tonight is from Councilmember Steve Baker, a proclamation, March 2018, as the sixteenth annual March for Meals Month. Councilmember Baker, yes, please come forward. Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas on March 22, 1972, President Richard Nixon signed into law a measure that amended the Older Americans Act of 1965 and established a national nutrition program for seniors sixty years and older; and whereas Meals on Wheels America established the March for Meals Campaign in March 2002 to recognize the historic month, the importance of the Older Americans Act nutrition programs, and to raise awareness about the escalating problem of senior hunger in America. And whereas, the 2018 Observance of March for Meals celebrates sixteen years of providing an opportunity to support Meals on Wheels programs that deliver vital and critical services by donating, volunteering, and raising awareness about senior hunger and isolation; and whereas, Meals on Wheels programs in Lexington County provide a powerful socialization opportunity for seniors to help combat loneliness and isolation; and whereas, Meals on Wheels programs in Lexington County deserve recognition for the contributions they have made and will continue to make to local communities, our state, and our nation. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and council for the town of Lexington that March 2018 is hereby declared March for Meals Month, and we urge every citizen to take time this month to honor our Meals on Wheels programs, the seniors they serve, and the volunteers who support them. Our recognition of and our involvement in the 2018 March for Meals Campaign can enrich our entire community and help combat senior hunger and isolation in America. Dated this fifth day of March 2018, Mayor Steve McDougall.
Very good. Congratulations. Please say a few words for us tonight.
It's good to be here again. I've been here before. It always pleases me that we know that for Lexington County Recreation and Aging Commission that we have the town of Lexington to support us. It's a big organization. My center alone, which is the Lexington Senior Center, sends out over seven hundred meals a week to the people in our area. And you know what's not all about the meals? It's about the volunteers that go to these people. Sometimes they're the only people that these seniors see, and they take it seriously. We could not do it without your support, and we definitely could not do it without our volunteers. And it touches me, and you're coming to deliver meals for us on the nineteenth.
Yes, ma'am.
And it's just awesome. A town like Lexington that is growing so big takes the time and the effort to make sure that its citizens are taken care of, and for that, I thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you and your husband do for the town and the community. Thank you. That concludes our presentations. We will move right into a vision plan update. The vision plan update for January... January? March 2018?
It's right.
It's right.
It is right.
It is right. The Ice House Amphitheater, the town of Lexington proudly presents Lexington Live Spring Concert Series at the Ice House Amphitheater. Save the dates. It begins Thursday evenings at 6:30 PM. It will begin April 12th with The Men of Distinction, April 19th with a band called Bombshell, April 26th with The Finesse Band, May 3rd will be The Tams, May 10th will be Tokyo Joe, and May 17th will be The Root Doctors. For more information or a full calendar of events, please visit icehouseamphitheater.com or you can find them on Facebook as well. The Lexington Farmers Market is now accepting applications for vendors for the 2018 season. If interested in being a part of the 2018 Farmers Market, please contact 358-7275. Again, 358-7275, or email us at farmersmarket@lexsc.com. And finally, the Lexington Wine Walk. The eighth annual Lexington Wine Walk on Main will take place Saturday, May 12th, 2018, from 6:00 to 10:00 PM at the Ice House Amphitheater located at 107 West Main Street. Local musical sensation, The Going Commando Band, will perform great classic rock, country, and blues hits throughout the night. Tickets are $30 each and include a commemorative wine glass, wine tastings, and hors d'oeuvres. For more information, or if you're interested in being a participating restaurant or exhibitor, please visit our website at lexingtonwinewalk.com. Also, you can find them on Facebook and Twitter, or you can email them at lexingtonwinewalk@gmail.com. This is a must-be twenty-one or older to attend, and you must have a photo ID to enter. That is all for the vision plan update for March 2018. Councilmember and Mayor Pro Tim is not with us tonight, so I will handle the traffic update as well. The South Carolina Six One Way Pair Project continues with construction activity along West Main Street and South Church Street. Please expect minor delays in and around these areas over the next few weeks. The next traffic committee meeting will be Wednesday, March 14th, at 8:00 AM in the third-floor conference room of Town Hall. Finally, if you are aware of any traffic issues, unsafe roadway situations, or potholes that need repair, please call 358-7273. Again, 358-7273. And that concludes the traffic update for March. At this time, we will move right into public hearings. Speakers are limited to five minutes. Our first public hearing is final reading of an ordinance for a multi-county industrial park incentive at 307 Industrial Drive. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none. Item number two, final reading of an ordinance allowing abandoned buildings tax credits. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Item number three, final reading of an ordinance to acquire property on Shore Road. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none. Item number four, final reading of an ordinance limiting lane closures on US 1 and US 378 and SC 6. And everybody in the room stood up and wanted to speak to that.
That's right.
No one here wishes to speak. That concludes our public hearings for this evening. Before we move into our business items for tonight, if you would like to leave the room, now is your chance. Thank y'all very much for coming tonight and being a part of our meeting tonight and being a part of our community. Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Clamp. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Before we begin our business meeting tonight, I would like to say that I did receive a letter of resignation this week from Councilmember Ted Stambleidis. It seems that he has moved outside of the town limits and does not abide by the law. As the law has written, as a council member must live in the town limits. He decided because of that situation that he would resign his seat, and he did the right thing, resigned and stepped away from council. He was going to be with us tonight, and thank everyone for working with him and being a part of his life for the last eleven years, but I guess he's busy at the restaurant tonight, and we'll talk to him again soon. But I would like the record to show that we did receive a letter of resignation from Councilmember Ted Stambleidis. Moving right into old business, our first item of old business is from Councilmember Kathy Manis, final reading of an ordinance for a multi-county industrial park incentive at 307 Industrial Drive. Councilmember Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Team Six Properties LLC owns a parcel of land described as Lexington County Tax Map 005498-05-042 with an address of 307 Industrial Drive. The property is part of a plan to establish a multi-county industrial park, MCIP. Since the property is slated to be annexed by the town of Lexington, an ordinance of the town of Lexington agreeing to the MCIP and its incentives is necessary for the property to qualify for the MCIP incentive offered by the county. The draft ordinance is attached. I make a motion for final reading approval of an ordinance for a multi-county industrial park incentive at 307 Industrial Drive.
Councilmember Manis makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Todd Corns, final reading of an ordinance allowing abandoned buildings tax credits. Councilmember Corns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The property formerly known as the Boral Brick Property is part of a plan to establish a multi-county industrial park. The multi-county industrial park credit has been applied for, and the property owners also wish to apply for the abandoned building tax credits. The draft ordinance is attached. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for final reading approval of an ordinance allowing the abandoned building tax credits for the former Boral Brick Property.
Councilmember Corns makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Not seconded.
Councilmember Manis seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Ron Williams, final reading of an ordinance to acquire property on Shore Road. Councilmember Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The town plans to expand the Shore Road pump station as part of a long-term water and sewer system capital improvements plan. Additional property is needed for the expansion and to currently improve access to the site for ongoing operations. Adjacent property is being developed as an expansion of the Fox Chase subdivision. The developers agreed to sell the town approximately a half acre of additional property for the pump station in exchange for seven sewer capital contribution fees with a total value of $25,900. Make a motion for final reading approval of an ordinance to acquire the property on Shore Road.
Councilmember Williams makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Steve Baker, final reading of an ordinance limiting lane closures on US 1 and 378 and South Carolina 6. Councilmember Steve Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Council discussed the passage of an ordinance intended to give town officials authority on all lane closures associated with new building construction within the town limits along US 378, US 1, and SC 6. While the South Carolina Department of Transportation issues permits that allow for lane closures between 9:00 AM and 4:00 PM, in many cases contractors have exceeded these times. By granting town staff the authority to approve all closures along these routes, it will help to address some of the traffic issues. The suggestion has been made that no more than a two-hour temporary lane closure be permitted during daytime, and any lane closures requiring a lengthier amount of time would be required to be after 7:00 PM and before 6:00 AM. It's with great pleasure that I request a final reading of an ordinance limiting lane closures on US 1, US 378, and South Carolina 6.
Councilmember Baker makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Not seconded.
Everybody seconds. Councilmember Manis seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Moving right into new business, our first item of new business is from Councilmember Kathy Manis, first reading of an ordinance annexing the Lexington County Tax Map number 3500-03-151, 152, 153, 012, 155, 154, 065, 052, and 011, located on Darby Ambrose Lane. Councilmember Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. The Drafts Family owns forty-three point eight acres located on nine, acres on nine parcels located on Darby Ambrose Road and have petitioned to annex the properties. The Crager Company is proposing a planned development that includes a corporate office and a warehouse on the property, as well as mixed-use development and residential area. Properties in town near this one are zoned general commercial. Darby Ambrose Road is classified as a limited local road. Due to the intended use of the property, the owners requested a mixed industrial, general commercial, and protected residential zoning on the property with a planned development special overlay. The Planning Commission reviewed this proposal during their February meeting and tabled the discussion of the planned development until further, until additional information could be provided by the applicant. As a result, the Planning Commission recommended against annexing the property with the requested zoning at this time. I make a motion that we table this until it goes back to the Planning Commission.
Councilmember Manis makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of tabling the motion. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Corns, first reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map number 4496-02-030 located at 5229 Sunset Boulevard. Councilmember Todd Corns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. SGC Mineral Springs LLC owns 4.3 acres at 5229 Sunset Boulevard and has petitioned to annex the property. An automotive repair and car wash are being planned on the site. Properties in town near this one are zoned general commercial. Sunset Boulevard is classified as an artiro road, and Mineral Springs Road is classified as a collector. The Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their February meeting and recommended the same zoning and road classifications for this parcel. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for first reading approval.
Councilmember Corns makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker seconds the motion. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Corns.
I have a quick question. Perfect timing for Mr. Hanson.
That's right. Mr. Hanson.
Mr. Hanson, why don't you come on up, but don't grab your seat. Just keep walking.
I don't have my files.
It's right on top of your shoulders, man, all your files. The annexation right there on Mineral Springs?
Yes, sir.
Have we seen, we reviewed the site plan on that?
We have reviewed a proposed site.
We have not approved a site plan.
Because there's some potential changes maybe in that intersection. Does it account for all of that?
Yes, sir. We've, Randy and I had a meeting with them, with the applicants, after the Planning Commission meeting last week, and made some revisions, and we've got some architectural review issues we're dealing with on the proposed project, so it's not, it's not done yet by any stretch of the imagination.
But just procedurally, when somebody's going through their, their site plan proposal and things of that nature, and we know there, there could be changes there, and we can, can we preemptively ask them to accommodate that?
We have. In this particular case, we met with the developers six months ago, and we told them what we felt like the traffic plan that would be approved. I think they've got one curb cut in there that may be one too many, and so we've kind of kicked it back to them to revise it. Some of it has to do with the positioning of the buildings that are being proposed on there, too, so until they get that worked out, the traffic plan's not completed yet.
And I'm assuming they have, and they get rights to one curb cut from DOT on 378?
They, in this particular case, what is being proposed is they are proposing to share the, to have a shared curb cut, so they're not actually putting one on 378. They're proposing to share one with the
Building next door?
Building next door, yes.
Okay. Perfect. Thanks, sir.
Very good. Councilmember Manis.
Mr. Hanson. I'm sorry I missed the Planning Commission. I found something that could put me down, and it was called the flu, so
Glad you weren't there.
I did not want to share my terms. So I did watch it, though, because I was, I was concerned about this property, and I think you answered my question, that they're going to share the, off of 378, they're going to share what used to be one taco, two taco?
That's correct. That's what's proposed at this point, and I don't foresee any changes to that side of it, where we have some staff level issues or with the one full-service driveway that is proposed on Mineral Springs in addition to a limited-service driveway, so we've told them that they need to go back and revise that.
So will they have to make some improvements at Mineral Springs?
They are making, they are proposing to
Right turn lane on Mineral Springs?
One and a half.
One, one and a half lane increase on Mineral Springs.
So is this ready for us to vote on, or do we need to make sure that that traffic is taken care of?
You're voting on the annexation and the zoning of the property. You're not voting on the potential project that will go on.
Mr. Cunningham, Mr. Paul.
If you want to make sure you have a say-so in that, you need to annex it.
That's exactly what I was going to say. If you want control, you have to.
Yep. Any other questions? Very good. Thank you. Thank you, John. We have a first and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Ron Williams, first reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map number 3500-04-040, located adjacent to 4765 Sunset Boulevard. Councilmember Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sam Jones Lexington LLC owns six acres on the 4700 block of Sunset Boulevard and has petitioned to annex the property. A Hampton Inn Hotel is being planned on a portion of the property. Properties in town near this one are zoned general commercial, and Sunset Boulevard is classified as an arterial road. The Planning Commission will review this annexation during their March meeting to recommend a zoning and road classification for this parcel. I'd like to make a motion for first reading approval.
Councilmember Williams makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Councilmember Carons seconds the motion. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Mr. Baker?
Is this project going to fall in the same type of idea as the one that we just did where we need to annex it to have a say?
Mr. Paul, Mr. Cunningham?
That's universally going to be true, yes, sir.
I have a question for Mr. Hanson.
No problem. You should maybe get a front row seat next time. Ms. Manis.
Mr. Hanson, I, I usually don't like this stuff coming to us before it goes to the Planning Commission, so is there, is there a timeline for this? Are they in a hurry for this? In other words, do we have to do this for some reason before it goes to the Planning Commission to come back to us?
I think the developer, Mr. Edwards and I have been working with this particular project developer for probably a year on a couple of different sites. We have gotten a traffic plan that Randy is in agreement with and DOT is in agreement with, and I think they're ready to move forward.
So it will go to the Planning Commission, then it comes back to us, or this is our only chance? We're just going to vote and?
We'll come back to you on a second reading with the public hearing. You're mainly just voting to annex the property entitled this time for first reading.
Very good. Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Mr. Carons, can you raise your microphone, John, please? Thank you.
Just procedurally, I understand, you know, we're first reading, then planning commission, then second commission, second reading. If something happens in planning commission that's unfavorable or we're uncomfortable with, and what are our procedural options in lieu of final reading approval at our next meeting? Can we, at that point after first reading approval has been given, if planning commission services something that we're uncomfortable with, can we delay final reading approval for another 30 days? Can we table it? Do we have to turn it down? What are all the options?
If I could speak to that, the Conference of Planning Act puts some timelines on what the Planning Commission has to do and requires automatic approval if they don't take actions within certain times, depending on what the items are, but there are no timelines placed on council, so you have the ultimate decision. So in that scenario, you painted, you could table it, you could fail it, you could take any action that you can as a council, and it doesn't matter how you voted the first time. It's got to have two passing readings.
So you could, in theory, you could table something multiple times?
We have tabled annexations that there have been problems with for more than a year before. You can absolutely do it multiple times and for whatever, you know, reason you guys decide.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir. Mr. Williams?
Randy, you can come up, please. John, drug your hand, said you've seen the traffic plans for the property, so I'd like to ask you, is there a decelled lane included in the traffic plans for this property?
Yes, sir.
We got DOT to agree to it this time?
Yeah, they're in full agreement.
So, thank you.
And then the decelled lane leads to a shared driveway with the adjacent parcel.
Great. Very good.
Future.
Future planning. I like that.
Thank you.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand.
That is unanimous. Madam Clerk. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Steve Baker, first reading of an amendment to the landscape and tree ordinance. Councilmember Steve Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. At the February 20 work session, council discussed a problem caused by trees planted in the narrow grass strip between the curb and sidewalk along streets in the town. As these trees mature, their root system lifts the sidewalk, producing trip hazards. An amendment to the landscape and tree ordinance subdivision development was proposed. General, all street trees planted in the right-of-way shall meet at least one of the following criteria. One, be planted no closer than five feet to a public sidewalk, or two, be an approved under-story tree, or three, be planted with an approved and inspected root control system in place. I make a motion for first reading of an amendment to the landscape and tree ordinance.
Very good. Mr. Baker makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Carons seconds the motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Kathy Manis, first reading of a mobile food vendor ordinance. Councilmember Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Town Council is asked to consider passing an ordinance to allow mobile food vendors to operate within the town limits. Attached is a draft of the ordinance which indicates potential rules and regulations for licensing and operations of such vehicles. The regulations are drafted after a study of six such ordinances in other South Carolina municipalities. A permit fee is already established for the zoning permit required to operate pursuant to the ordinance. I make a motion for first reading approval of the mobile food vendor ordinance.
Councilmember Manis makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker seconds the motion. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Mr. Baker?
A few things. Mr. Hanson, come on back up. We missed you up here. So one of the questions that I've got pertaining to our proposed ordinance is the hours of operation. It says that it can open at 9:00 AM. The question that I have is, is that a 9:00 AM arrival time, and then once the unnecessary prep and everything is done, and then they can open for business? Or could they arrive prior to 9:00 AM, get all set up and prepped for a 9:00 AM opening?
The language in the ordinance says operation, so I would assume as long as they're not open for business, that would be acceptable.
So if I understand you correctly, if they arrive prior to 9:00 AM, got all set up, got their prep for a 9:00 AM opening, that is permissible under the proposed ordinance?
That's the way I would interpret it, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to amend our proposed ordinance to allow for a menu board within five feet of the actual truck, and also just, we're going to be discussing this further in work session, and we will be discussing further the distance requirement when we do that.
Very good. Mr. Baker makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Williams seconds the motion. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Cunningham.
Is that the distance from mobile food unit to the nearest restaurant?
Correct.
Did you get that, Madam Clerk? Thank you.
But that's going to be discussed in
Work session.
Work session at our next meeting.
Okay. Correct.
So the only amendment you're making to what I did was adding the menu.
Menu board.
Menu board.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Carons, amendment to the facade grant eligibility requirements. Councilmember Carons.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the February 20 work session, council discussed amending the facade grant program. Eligible expenditures by adding new construction facades up to a maximum of $10,000 to the downtown Tiff District. Although I'm personally going to be in opposition to this, I make a motion for council approval to put it on the floor, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carons makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker seconds the motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
Mr. Cunningham?
Yes, sir. Mr. Williams.
Mr. Cunningham, is there a way to write this motion in such a way that if the person receives any other benefit from the town prior to applying for the facade grant, that they could not be eligible for the facade grant?
You can make the motion whatever you want. If you want to amend it to say that, you could, but I don't know what the grant requirements are.
Yeah, I would add, anybody that, well, not anybody, many businesses that locate in this area that's described are going to get additional benefit because that's the refund of the business license that ordinance allows for. Bars, restaurants, retail, those businesses that, you know, are to be attracted downtown automatically get that, so we'd have to be clear about what you mean by assistance is what I want to point out.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Manis.
Based on what Mr. Paul just said, I would like to take this back to work session, and let's have more conversation about that. So I'd like to make a motion that this goes back to work session.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to send it back to work session. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand.
We're voting on the amendment to send it to work session?
Send it to work session. Yep. That's unanimous. Very good. Item number seven of new business, It's All About Herb Festival sponsor request from Councilmember Ron Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Beverly Cleckley with the Herb Bunch, a nonprofit club affiliated with the Clemson Extension Service, contacted us regarding their seventh annual It's All About Herb's Festival. The festival will be held Saturday, April 7th, on the grounds of the Lexington County Museum. In 2017, the group presented a $1,500 scholarship to Mariah Swiger of Batesburg Leesville to continue her studies in agricultural education at Clemson University. This year, they hope to increase the amount of the scholarship up to $2,000. The levels of scholarship are, range from gold at 350 down to bronze at 150. At the February 2018 council work session, a recommendation was made to make a bronze level contribution of $150. I make a motion for council approval for the bronze level.
Mr. Williams makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That's unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Steve Baker, boards and commissions appointment. Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Jennifer Morgan submitted a Town of Lexington Boards and Commissions application. She indicated an interest in serving on the traffic committee or Board of Zoning Appeals. Ms. Morgan is a town resident. At the February 20, 2018 council work session, a recommendation was made to appoint Ms. Morgan to the traffic committee. I make a motion for council consideration of appointment.
Councilmember Baker makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Carons seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is approved. Next, we will hear announcements from Councilmember Todd Carons this evening. Councilmember Carons.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Everybody hold on, we've got a lot of them here. We will, we'll start off just like Mr. Ron Williams got a few birthdays under his belt, and he's got another one tomorrow, so congratulations to Councilmember Ron Williams. Tomorrow evening, you can enjoy the Lexington District 1 art showcase at the Ice House Amphitheater from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Board of Zoning Appeals will not meet in March, but will meet again on April 5th at 5:30 here in council chambers. The Rockin' Shamrock Zoomathon will be on March 10th from 10:00 to 12:00 at the Lexington Leisure Center. Admission is $10, and all proceeds go to Meals on Wheels, which we heard from earlier. Visit www.lcrac for details. We hope you'll come out for the third annual St. Patrick's Day Parade on March 10th at 2:00 PM on Main Street. Lexington County Blowfish, the Greater Lexington Chamber of Commerce, and Town of Lexington invite all families to come out for a great afternoon. Bad weather last year, great weather this year. Don't forget to spring forward on March 11th at 2:00 AM for daylight savings time. Traffic Committee will meet on March 14th at 8:00 AM in the conference room on the third floor. The flashlight Easter egg hunt and carnival in the park will be March 16th at 6:00 PM at Gibson Road Soccer Complex. Kids ages zero to 10 and all ages of special needs will hunt for over, I hope that's not a typo, 100,000 plastic candy-filled eggs.
It's not a typo. It's right.
Wow. All right. And all the dentists said, thank you. You must have a ticket, so visit the Lexington County Recreation Agent Commission to purchase your tickets. Next council work session will be March 19th, and Eli Next council work session will be March nineteenth in Eli Mac Room. Planning Commission will meet on March twenty-first at eight AM here in council chambers. Four events, four cities, four days. On March twenty-second through the twenty-fifth, the Eighth Annual Tartan Day South is back. There will be a concert on Friday night at six thirty with Celtic commotion and exhibits at the Ice House Amphitheater. Saturday, gates open at nine for the main event at the historic Columbia Speedway for a day of Highland Games and the Celtic Festival. Uh, for a full list of events and tickets, you can go to tartandaysouth.com. On Thursday, the twenty-ninth, come out and enjoy Wonder Woman, the movie, which will start at eight pay, eight PM at the Ice House Amphitheater. Town Hall will be closed on Good Friday, March thirtieth. The municipal clerk will be here until twelve noon to accept candidate petitions for the upcoming special election. There will be a Good Friday service at the Ice House Amphitheater, March thirtieth at six thirty PM. It'll be hosted by several area churches together. Join us for barbecue and blues at the Ice House Amphitheater on March thirty-first, starting at eleven AM. The concert features blues Hall of Famer Mac Arnold and Plate Full of Blues and our own Blues Deluxe. There will be samples of barbecue from Hudson's, Old Mill Brew Pub, Roy's Grill, PK Barbecue, The Kingsman, and Keg Cowboy. Tickets are fifteen dollars in advance, twenty bucks at the door. This list is too long to keep going through April, but Lexington Live Free Thursday concerts will start back on April twelfth with Men of Distinction. Please visit icehouseamphitheater.com for a full list of events. Thank you for watching Town Council in action tonight and as we close, I would like to extend our deepest sympathy to the family of Jim Lowman who passed away on March first. Mr. Lowman was also known as retired Brigadier General James Lowman. Mr. Lowman served his country and his community in many ways. He served on Town Council from nineteen eighty-nine to nineteen ninety-four and again from two thousand to two thousand and four. Please keep his family in your prayers and we extend our condolences and thank him for his lifetime of service. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Carons. Anyone else have any announcements for this evening? You want to recognize?
I think we have some students here tonight. Ladies, would you like to tell us where you're from?
Brooklyn High School.
Is this a class that you're in or?
Yes, we are.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
At this time, are there any questions from the news media? I don't believe we have any here with us tonight. Jennifer says no. Public comments? Are there any comments from the public regarding items on tonight's agenda? Anyone wish to speak? Yes, sir. Please come forward, state your name and your address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is DJ Stone. Um, I am here representing the Blended Bakery, which is a mobile food unit. Uh, we actually live in two-ten Claremont Lakes Drive in Lexington. Uh, we are not inside the town limits. Um, tonight, I would like to say thank you very much for taking the opportunity to consider the mobile food, um, ordinance. Um, I would like to, um, if you don't mind, kind of propose a couple of things as you consider this ordinance in the working session and one of those is, um, allowing us to be able to set up tables. Um, as mobile food units, most of those guys have condiments and things that we set outside. So outside of having a, a sign, a menu board that allows people to see what we can offer, we also provide things like coffee creamers and sugars and stuff like that and that goes on a table. So those are some things that, that our customers would not be able to get otherwise unless we're passing that through the window for them. Uh, the other proposal that we were wanting to make sure is that, uh, I know that we're talking about that in the working session about the distance from a restaurant. Um, we are proposing that that be removed because that same restriction is not applied to brick and mortar restaurants. Um, and in the proposed ordinance, we are allowing, uh, to get property owner permission and I guess as a mobile food vendor, if I'm getting the property owner permission, I'm not gonna go to a restaurant and get that same property owner permission. They're not gonna really grant that. So, uh, we're asking just the, for the council to consider that. The other proposal that we're asking for is, um, in the proposed ordinance, it's allowing town inspectors onboard the mobile food unit, but there was nothing in the ordinance that really talked about the inside, which that is regulated by DHEC. Um, and conversations with DHEC, they have pointed out in the regulations that there are not supposed to be any unauthorized people admitted on the inside of the unit because they haven't been trained in food safety. And so we would ask that the council consider making that change, um, if they want to address the things on the outside. I think outside of a fire marshal coming onboard the mobile unit, having an inspector on there can introduce contaminants to a food-prepped area or a sanitized area. So those are just a few items that we would like to propose to the council to consider as we're moving through that process on the ordinance.
Very good. Thank you. We will consider those.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any public comments for tonight's agenda? Hearing none, that concludes our business for this evening. Thank you for watching the Town Council meeting for the Town of Lexington. This meeting was held at Town Hall on Monday evening, March fifth, two thousand and eighteen. A recording of this meeting will be aired on the town's Information Cable Channel Two several times during this week and a video will be available on the town's website at L E X S C dot com. On behalf of Town Council and staff, I wish you all a good evening. Without objection, we are adjourned.